Good evening, everybody. This is the San Benito Consolidated Independent School District Board of Trustees' Monthly Meeting. It is Tuesday, February 20, 2018, and I call this meeting to order at exactly 6:30 PM. Roll call, Mr. Mendez.
Present.
Ms. Emel Garcia.
Present.
Ms. Anna Cruz. Mr. Joji Gonzalez.
Present.
Mr. Orlando Lopez.
Present.
Mr. Victor Eloy Rosas.
Present.
Mr. or Dr. Nick Harmon.
Present.
And Mr. Tony Torres.
Present.
Agenda item number three, Pledge of Allegiance to the United States and Texas Flags. I will turn it over to Ms. Garcia.
Yes, sir, thank you. Tonight, we are very honored to have two students from Sullivan. One of them is Angelica Maria Ramirez. She is the daughter of proud parents, Mr. and Mrs. Guadalupe and Patricia Ramirez. Angelica is nine years old and is a fourth grade student at Sullivan Elementary. Her hobbies include art, swimming, and dancing. Since kindergarten, she has been awarded numerous academic awards such as A Honor Roll for the Year, Top Achiever for her class, and Accelerated Reader. Angelica was also named Student of the Month for the month of January this year. Aside from academics, she is also involved in extracurricular activities. She is a member of the Sullivan chess team, the Sullivan robotics team, and has also been a member of the Sullivan pep squad, and is also a member of the school ballroom dancing. Off-campus, Angelica is also a member of the chess, excuse me, is a member of the Christ Warrior Athletics Dance Team. Angelica is a fun, loving, sweet, humble, caring person with a beautiful heart and wants to help everyone in the world. When she grows up, she plans to become a doctor. For the invocation, we have Jack Ryan Mills. Jack Ryan Mills is a nine-year-old and is a fourth-grade student at Sullivan Elementary. He is the son of Jonathan and Debbie Mills. Some of his hobbies include spending time at home, playing video games, reading, or playing broad board games with family and friends. Jack also collects soda taps to donate to the Ronald McDonald House and makes donations to the Trust for the National Mall to help preserve our landmarks. In school, he has accomplished his Accelerated Reader goal every year and has won essay contests during his summers. He received second place in this year's Science Fair competition with his project titled, "Which Type of Food Do Ants Prefer?" in the biology category. In addition, he was also a member of the Battle of the Blue Bonnet Books that competed against other elementary schools in our district. This year, Jack was voted in by his peers to serve as student council fourth-grade representative. Jack is also a member of the Sullivan Elementary Testians Club, where he has performed in various plays and musicals. He is a hard worker and will, and he will continue to do his best to maintain high grades throughout his educational career. Jack plans to become a librarian when he grows up. Okay? Thank you.
(Applause).
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
May we be blessed with guidance and wisdom as we begin this meeting. Let us use the best skills and judgment for decisions made towards our community and education. Help us to be patient and kind as we speak. Please continue to bless everyone with a safe, happy school year. Thank you for letting us gather here and for your continued blessings. Amen.
If the parents are in the audience, can they please stand up and be recognized? Parents. (Applause). Mrs. Ramirez is the elementary principal for Sullivan.
Can we have another round of applause for our awesome students from Sullivan? Great, so we move on to Agenda Item Five. That's our special recognitions. We typically have Ms. Celia Longoria lead those, but she is not with us today. So for each, I'm going to ask the sponsor, or teacher, or principal to come up and introduce their students accordingly. So first, we have from Veterans Memorial Academy. We are honoring the Rookie and Apprentice Division at the Texas Region One Braille Challenge.
We are very honored and pleased with our student. He is doing tremendous. And I'm going to have the Braille teachers introduce and tell us all about how he did at the district competition. And Paul, we love you. You're awesome. Keep it up, okay? Okay, you want to tell them?
Good evening. My name is Imelda Gomes. I'm the TVI for the school district. And Mr. Juan Rivera, who's also a newly TVI. Paul has been participating, last year was his first year. He participated in the Braille Challenge, and he got third place. It was his first year, so he did fairly well still. This is his second year, and we are very happy to announce that he got, obviously, first place this year, so we are very proud of him. We're also looking forward to exposing him to a lot of new educational leagues. He'll be participating in the Texas School for the Blind. He'll be attending a short-term program out there on March 2nd through the 4th. Plus, we also want to let you know he's going to be participating in a STEMS program that Region One will be offering, which is coming up here this year also. So we're just kind of trying to expose him to as many educational activities as possible, and we collaborate very closely with his case manager, Mrs. Celia Anzaldua, who's been a great resource also for us to be able to get him whatever it is that he needs. So it's been a pleasure working with this young man, and I look forward to all of the exciting things he has to offer us.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Celia has been working with him, and he's even doing the calculator using Algebra One. He is doing stupendously great. Ms. Celia, on behalf of BMA, we thank you and keep up the good work, okay? Thank you, board.
Yes.
And his mother. This is his mother. Okay? Muchas gracias, y tiene un niño muy inteligente. Gracias. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Galiban. Next, we have our district-wide Science Fair winners. Ms. Edvion, thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, we have a fine group of young scientists waiting to be recognized. We want to honor all our young scientists tonight for being extremely curious and wanting to know about the world around us. They want to know what makes it and us tick. That is after, this is what sets the foundation of invention and creativity. Science nurtures this curiosity, and all these children exemplify that. So without further ado, we are honoring the following students, commencing with elementary. In third place for biology, we have Caleb Garcia and Ryan Lugo from Ed Downs Elementary.[613.82][613.82](Laughter). Second place, under the category of biology, Jack Mills from Sullivan Elementary. And again, under the category of biology, first place goes to Gadiel Ovaye, Rangerville In the category of chemistry, in third place, we have Priscilla Medina from La Encantada. Second place, Haley Galarza, La Encantada. And in first place, under our category of chemistry, we have Leah Renee De La Garza from Dr. Garza Elementary. Moving on to earth science, in third place, we want to honor Joe L. Garcia and Mario Camarillo from Fred Booth. In second place, we have Annette Monjares, Aliana Salinas from Angela Lial. And in first place, under the category of earth science, we have Kimberly Valdez from Judge Oscar de la Fuente. Moving on to the category of physical science, in third place, we have Kathleen Caitlin, sorry, Rodriguez, and Audrey Uliola from Angela Lial. Second place went to Isaiah Briones and Aiden Lopez from Dr. Garza. And in first place, under the area of physical science, we have Erin Hernandez and Julian Saldana Lopez, Jr. from Fred Booth Elementary. In our category of social science, in second place, the award recipient was Haley Dávila from Judge Oscar de la Fuente. And in first place, we had Sofia Hernandez, Alana Torres from Fred Booth Elementary. And a special congratulations to Gadiel Ovaye from Rangerville Elementary, who was our sweepstakes winner. And if the parents or relatives of these young scientists would stand up, so we can give you a round of applause also for all your hard work. Thank you, students. Moving on to middle school. Our award recipients. In chemistry, we have, first place goes to Alexia Contreras from Berta Cavassa Middle The Earth Science Award goes to Uday Lopez from Berta Cavassa Middle School. Under physical science, in second place, we had Mario Garcia, Berta Cavassa Middle And in first place, Abraham Garcia, Berta Cavassa Middle School. A special congratulations to Abraham. He was also our sweepstakes winner. Again, if the parents or relatives are in the audience, if you would please stand, so we can acknowledge you and give you a big round of applause. Thank you, students. Moving on to high school. Chemistry. Third place goes to Adriana Dominguez, Gabriel Pinon from Veterans Memorial Academy. Second place, under chemistry, goes to Eileen de la Rosa and Ingrid Muñoz, Veterans Memorial And in first place, we have Eduardo Abrego and Jacob Saunceda, San Benito High School. Earth science, we have Sam Samsonar Sok and Dana Vella from San Benito High School. Physical science, third place goes to Philip Stein, San Benito High School. Second place, Rebecca Guzman and Kayira Chides, Veterans Memorial. And first place, Madeline Cole and Amanda Muniz, Veterans Memorial. In the area of social science, in third place, we have Gladys Flores, Joel Dominic Flores from San Benito High School. In second place, Bianca Vázquez, Joel López, San Benito High School. And in first place, we have Isaac Delgado, Veterans Memorial, who was also our sweepstakes winner. Again, our parents that are here representing these wonderful students, if you would please stand, so we can give you a great big hand. And I'd also like to recognize the sponsors and teachers that assisted, put in tireless hours helping our young scientists. Without you, they couldn't have completed these tasks. Thank you very much for all your hard work and effort. Thank you, students.
Thank you, Ms. Edvion. We now move on to the superintendent's report. I'll turn it over to Dr. Harmon.
I think the good part of the meeting is over here. All right. Another superintendent's report. The first item, information only to share. We received a statement of impact from TEA regarding South Texas Trade Academy. Essentially, any time a new charter applies to open up in our area, they're required to notify the area school districts. In this case, the name of the proposed charter school is South Texas Trade Academy. They plan to open their doors in Brownsville, and the expected impact it could have on our school district and possibly other area districts is the student enrollment.
Any questions on that?
I do. I'm noticing the, the name of the school regarding trades. Are there, do you know if their emphasis is on the technical programs, Dr. Harmon?
I do not know. We receive notification when they first apply for a charter.
Okay.
So we are, we're not given any further information on them. We can research them. This is simply the required notification from the Texas Education Agency. My assumption, based on their name, yes, sir, there'll be probably a focus on career in tech.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, next, we have some financial reports, and I think Mrs. Rendon may want to do this from her, her seat this evening.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Vargas, Dr. Harmon, and board members and community. Tonight, I'm going to present the financials, starting off with a cash balancing report. Starting off with the cash balances for the month ending of January 2018. In our cash balance, we have $10,267,380.37. In the investment pool, we have $50,641,289.46. Combined, we have $60,908,669.83. Going forward into the student activity accounts, for the month ending January 2018, our ending balance is $458,810.88. Followed by is the information in your packet is the owners of those accounts. Now, we're going into the comparison of the revenue to budget and expenditures to the budget. Starting off with the revenues. First part is the general fund. Realized revenue to date is $59,330,112.46. We estimated the revenue for the general operating funds of $102,669,252. We've realized 54.12% of anticipated revenue. The midsection is our special revenue funds. That is on a reimbursement basis. Realized through January is $360,158.77. We anticipate receiving $18,233,607.94. We realize 16.78% of federal funds. In our interest and sinking fund, which is the bottom portion of it.
Ms. Rendon.
Yes.
Could I pause you for that for a minute?
Yes.
Regarding, I think they removed the, oh, hold on. On the special revenue report, give me one sec. Can you put it back on the screen?
I think we need to go one back, Celia.
Thank you. So can you, can you provide us some insight on the low percentages on the reimbursement? You anticipate $18 million, and we've realized $3 million, is that correct?
$3 million has, cash has been received by the, by the district.
What, what tends to be the, the holdup on it?
Well, one of them, just, I'm going to bring you, this isn't, like I said, on the reimbursement. We spend it first, and then we ask from the state.
Okay.
If we look, if we have a cumulative total, if I'm going to bring you down to where it says the 410, which is a textbook fund.
Yes.
We have $3 million, $3.3 million allotted in that fund, so it's kind of, it's kind of making it large, because that money hasn't been brought down. Anticipation is that we want to use some of that for our one-to-one initiative. So in the balances, that, that percentage there, it's very low, the 3.2. I'm going to go into a little bit on the second page, which is the actual expenditures, and explain a little bit more. This is the revenues that we received it. So I can draw down, we're always a little bit behind, but I can, we can go into the next page where the actual expenditures, and we can go into a little bit more detail.
Okay.
Okay. And the interest and sinking fund, we have received $6,471,825 for our debt service. That is because they're doing catch-up, so we received, that's a high percentage, is because we received more funds, because they had been owing us some money from our refinancing of the, of the bonds. Now, the second page, this is where the actual expenditures occurred. In the general funds, expenditures have aired $39,979,277.71. We have $7,118,143 in encumbrances. And total, within the $4 million, we anticipated transferring to INS, which will not occur, was $114,439,481. We spent $34.93. This is actual expenditure. This is actual money that has gone out. Now, that is the anticipated expenditure, I mean, expenditures that have gone out, we have received 52. So we're about 20% have more cash than actual money has gone out through January 18. Now, here's in the special revenue funds, is where we start looking at the percentages. I'm going to keep in mind is, the very top where it says percent expended, that means we actually have written out a check. We're going to start off with 211-8, which is, the first one is a Title I. Our expenditures have, is 1.4, $1,401,933.91. We do have $929,778 in actual expenditures that we're, we're anticipating receiving it. So the percent is low, because that's what we actually have spent. We do have close to another $900,000, over $900,000 are expected in encumbrances to come.
And that was going to be my question, because I know, and I feel like we are beating the dead horse every time you bring it up.
Yes, yes.
Was the migrant program spending from last year?
Yes.
We didn't expend all of it, so are we in a good spot, given that we haven't spent?
Well, we're trying to now. What has occurred from the last meeting to today is that we got our maximum rollover, which means that the money that we didn't spend back in August, now they reallocated and gave it back to us. So the percentages might go lower, because now we got additional funds that we need to spend.
So you're complaining that we have more money to spend?
(Laughter) We do. So the percentages might have been a little bit higher last month, but now, but by, by giving, by infusing more funds in it, the percentages are going down. Now, how we read that, yes, there is a couple of them that, that stick out, and I, that just pop out there. I'm going to go into, let's say, the 263, which is our migrant, I mean, our Title III. Our grant is for $227,446. Actual expenditures is $15,000. That's going, something that I've already evaluated, and I will be meeting with the program director, that's 6.73. Notice that there's nothing under the encumbrances, so that is something that, that we need to address. Then you have something like the 244, where the grant is for $182, and we spent $126,000. There's 22, we're at 69%. Those are, those are a little, now, with that grant, we had no rollover, because last year, we spent it 100%. So some of these numbers are, the percentages went down from last, from last meeting, because now I put more money into it.
So do we, I guess this is a question for Dr. Harmon. Do we have an action plan for how we're going to spend this money, and make sure we don't arrive at the same juncture we did last year with not spending this money fully?
We do. We have an action plan. We also have a timeline. We have told directors and principals how much time they have to spend the money for their department or their campus. If it's not spent by a date here in March, we will pull the money back into a pool, pool, and we will go forward with district initiatives like our interactive projectors.
Thank you.
Okay. And also, that textbook account, that is holding a big amount, which makes the overall percentages kind of low, and that's over $3.1 million. And that's for the one-to-one initiative that we've been talking about, those Chrome Books and District Ride, so that, that should take a good, a good portion of it once we bring it to committee for approval. So we are aware of it, and we're constantly looking at that, and we, we are working to try to, our goal is to, to meet those deadlines. And on the interest and sinking fund, we've only spent $750, which are administrative fees. Our bond payment is- only spent $750, which are administrative fees. Our bond payment is due, principal and interest is due in February. We sent it out last week. So these totals, just keep in mind, they're at the end of January. Going forward into the tax collections report. Through January 31st, the district has collected $9,171,811.41. Our tax levy is $12,987,928.21. The district has collected 70.62% of the tax levy. And we collect all the way through August 31st. Our checks disbursements is the next one, and those are all the checks that were written for the month. If any of the trustees have any information, we wrote a total between, total checks of $22,217,650.50 for the month of January.
I think we're good.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rendón and Dr. Carmen. We now move on to public comment. I don't think we have a public comment, so we can move forward from that. We will move on to the consent agenda. In order to promote efficient meetings, the board may act upon more than one item by a single vote to the use of consent agenda. Consent items placed on the agenda shall be marked with an asterisk. Consent items are items for which no board discussion is anticipated, for which a superintendent recommends approval. Prior to the time which approval of consent agenda is had, at the request of any member of the Board of Trustees, any item, the consent agenda shall be removed and given individual consideration. For action agenda, under Business and Finance, 1802A-1, request for, request approval of budget amendments for 2017, 2018. Question? Consent? 1802A-2, request approval of joint election agreement between San Benito CIST and the City of San Benito. Question? Consent? 1802A-3, request approval of contracting with the Cameron County Elections for the May 5th, 2018 elections. Question? Consent? 1802A-4, request approval of the notice of election polling sites for the May 5th, 2018 school board elections. Question? Consent? 1802A-5, request approval of May 5th, 2018 order of election for the purpose of electing to the Board of Trustees of the San Benito CIST members to fill Place 1, Place 2, and Place 3. Question? Consent? 1802A-6, request approval of 2016, 2017 audit. Question? Consent? 1802A-7, request approval of the purchase of band uniforms for San Benito High School Band Department. Question? Consent? 1802A-8, request approval of the purchase of 90 student desktop Dell computers for San Benito High School. Question? Consent? 1802A-9, request approval of a set fixed rate for transportation services. Question? Consent? 1802A-10, request approval of identified hazardous transportation routes for funding. Question? Consent? 1802A-11, request approval of the purchase of two Tahos for the San Benito CIST Police Department. Question? Consent? 1802A-12, request to approve administration's recommendation to award RFCSP-1217 District Wide Canopies to GNG Contractors. Question? Consent? 1802A-13, request approval of LED lighting project for Dr. Garza and Langantide Elementary to be conducted by Eco Induction Systems. Question? Consent? Under Administration, 1802A-14, request approval of memorandum of understanding between San Benito CIST and Nueva Luces Foundation. Question?
Question.
Question by Mr. Lopez. 1802A-15, request for approval of memorandum of understanding between San Benito CIST and TSTC Dual Enrollment. Question? Consent? 1802A-16, request for approval of the district-wide or district campus improvement plans for 2017, 2018. Question? Consent? 1802A-17, request approval of revisions to DCE Local. Question? Consent? 1802A-18, request approval of revisions to EIC Local. Question? Consent? 1802A-19, request approval of repurposing and rezoning for Dr. Garza Elementary and Landrum Elementary. I have a question on that one. 1802A-20, request approval to establish an early college academy. Question by Mr. Gonzalez. 1802A-21, request for approval of board minutes. Question? Consent? Can I please have a motion to approve, under Business and Finance, 1802A-1, -2, -3, -4, -5, -6, -7, -8, -9, -10, -11, -12, -13? And under Administration, 1802A-15, -16, -17, -18, and -21. Move by Mr. Lopez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Mendez. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Our first question item, under Administration, is 1802A-14, request approval of memorandum of understanding between San Benito CIST and Nueva Luces Foundation. Mr. Lopez?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. Thank you. Dr. Carmen, I wanted, in the committee meeting, we had discussed this, and I wanted, we had asked for a little bit more information on how impactful this program actually was to our district, and we didn't get an answer. Do you have any more feedback since then?
No, sir, I do not. And our coordinator over this program is at a workshop. Is that correct? I do not have that information back for you yet.
He's in Galveston, at the workshop with, it took some counselors.
Okay. Is there anybody here that has experience with this program prior?
Mr. Gonzalez?
Good evening, board. The Nueva Luces Foundation was previously under, we facilitated their services through the Parental Development Department last year, but now, since it's under a, the Counseling Department, Mr. Eddie Suthes has taken on that role of the services that are provided to them. And so, Nueva Luces Foundation does have some data or some background information in terms of how it impacted students. And so, I know that we did service students at our middle schools and a couple of our VMA, at our VMA campus. So they would have that information. The actual foundation would have the information as to how many students they served, and what was the impact of those students. We were just a facility, we allowed the facility and the students so that they could provide the service to our students. It was free. And so that's how we worked with them for the past two years. And so that's, they're just continuing their services, but now through Mr. Eddie Suthes' department.
Okay. Great. Thank you, sir. Mr. Madrigal, moving forward, it would be nice, if we get like, like a survey with these, with this, you know, if they're having these programs and these kids are being impacted, one way, shape, or form, whether it's a government grant or not, it would be nice for the board to get some type of information, as far as, you know, the child or the family's assessment on the programs that we're providing our kids. Right, sir? Thank you.
Yes, sir. Will do.
Do I have a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Lopez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mendez. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. The next question item, under Administration, is 1802A-19, request approval of the repurposing or rezoning for Dr. Garza Elementary and Landrum Elementary. Like, Mr. Gonzalez, you want to go first? Okay. For me, I just wanted to make sure, because I know we had held several town halls, and we had public hearings about what ultimately we were going to do, and we wanted to make sure that we were very transparent in our final decision, in terms of what the administration has decided. I will say, having the public hearings really provided a lot of light on some information we didn't even know, coming from the parent to student. So, Dr. Carmen, if you can give us the final decision in terms of what we're looking at for these campuses, or namely at Dr. Garza.
Certainly. So for Dr. Garza, in listening to our parents, our public hearings, some of the things we learned as we go forward, that we're including in this recommendation, involve our special education units. We plan to keep those on that campus, so those parents and those students are not going through any changes in terms of where they're being served. The, some of the other things that we learned in meeting with our parents, I think was a desire for the students who were already at that campus to be allowed to return to that campus. And so what we will be considering, as we put together the admission criteria, we will put together one of two things, or possibly a combination. One is potential grandfathering for students who are currently residing in that zone and attending Dr. Garza, and would like to attend this team's school. The second option we will look at and include would be like a walking zone. So whether or not they're grandfathered in or not, if those parents are using it as a neighborhood school, and part of what they get out of that is the ability to walk their kids to school or back, or meet them, we will include that as well. Beyond that, the zoning that we presented for the last two months will stand as is. But those are, those are three of the key things that we learned through our public hearings.
So I have motion to approve. Can I have a second? Second by Mr. Lopez. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The next question item, under Administration, is 1802A-20, request approval to establish an early college academy. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes, well, basically, we just wanted to make sure that we were transparent, I mean, with the community. So if you could just give us a little input on it, and this is very good for the district.
Yes, sir. I'd be happy to elaborate a little bit. Pardon me. So the early college academy, at the end of the day, what we are recommending is that we initiate the early college academy, so that students in grades 10th, and then 11th and 12th, starting in year one next year with only 10th graders, but students who are in this academy, when they graduate high school, they will complete their 42 core hours that are required for their bachelor's degrees. This will be housed at one of our pods at VMA, that is currently not, not being used to serve 9th graders. We will plan to use A&amp;M Kingsville. They have committed to provide instructors to us. We will staff the administration and the counselors there, so our schedule works well. And so if these kids have the opportunity, if they're taking, if they're involved in extracurricular activities, they will have the opportunity to, to go to the regular high school for that, for Career and Tech classes. But in the middle of the day, we're going to get their dual enrollment courses done during the day on our campus, so kids leave there with 42 credit hours if they, if they do the work required.
Like I said before, this is great for the district, and I proudly move to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mendez. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. We move on now to the closed meeting. Discussion under the authority of the Texas Government Code 551.071, for the purpose of private consultation with the board's attorney on any subjects or matters authorized by law. 551.074, for the purpose of the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. A, employment, resignations, and retirements. B, discussion and consideration of the superintendent's employment contract. C, Level 3 grievance of Mary J. Trevino. And D, Level 3 grievance of Francisco Del Angel. We convene into executive session at exactly... Good evening. We reconvene back into open session at 8:54 PM. Under employment, resignations, and retirements. Dr. Carmen?
Thank you, Mr. Vargas. At this point in time, I would ask the board for motion to approve the employment as presented in executive session.
I, does, do I have a motion?
So move.
Move by Mr. Lopez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mendez. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Under discussion and consideration of superintendent's employment contract?
I move to approve the salary adjustments and benefit adjustments to the superintendent's contract, as discussed in closed session.
I hear a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lopez. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. For the Level 3 grievance of Mary J. Trevino?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. I move to deny the Level 3 grievance and uphold the Level 2 decision by the administration.
I hear a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lopez. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. For the Level 3 grievance of Francisco Del Angel?
Yes, sir, President. I move to deny the Level 3 grievance and uphold the Level 2 decision of administration.
I hear a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Mendez. I do have one abstention. No abstention. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Final agenda item, we adjourn, well, do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So move.
Move by Mr. Mendez. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Garcia. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We adjourn at exactly 8:56 PM.